We are live.
Randy, we don't know where Randy is.
Good evening all and welcome to the anymore meeting for May 5th, 2021. Again, thank you to LTV and thank you to the planning department staff and planning board staff for being here. Thank you, members. We've got quite a number of matters on tonight, sub wave review, site plan review, and we have two artist studio applications as well as an urban renewal report. So let's get started with.
Excuse me, Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt. I just want to double check that I can just let everybody in we spoke about so that people are prepared for tonight's meeting.
Have you let them in?
I'm gonna, I'm sorry?
You haven't let them in?
I'm gonna do that right now.
Okay, well, once you're done, then we have a technical problem with Randy Carson's having a problem getting through.
The second I see him, I'll let them in.
Okay, thanks.
Just one second.
Mm-hmm. What we should do is all the folks whose, whose applications are coming up later in the meeting, but I think they should mute and possibly cut off the video just for that, just so that it's less confusing for everybody. Lori Wiltshire, you're on Green Acres, correct? You're muted, Lori. Lori?
Okay, yes, correct.
Yeah, okay, yeah, okay, so we'll have this Wilshire first and then we'll go through just so since we have all the folks who are on, we'll have Green Acres first, Hand Lane South next, Adamidoo, Cus, I apologize, I thought I had it right. No, I had, I tried all afternoon, Cusco-Cedis. Um, Adamidoo and Cusco-Cedis after that, then 80 Firestone Bluff Crest cottages, then John Sebastianski Artist Studio, then.
Hi, sorry about that, computer, technical difficulties.
Then we have Ms. D'Agostino's Artist Studio and then the Palme's Urban Renewal Application. So do we have Randy? Because I know there was an issue of getting Randy in.
Not yet, but I'd advise Randy if he can hear, if he can call into the phone line just to have something, that's an option.
I just gave him the call-in number.
Great.
Let's just wait one minute.
Sure, Chair, if you want to wait all the second he's in, I'll tell you.
That'll be fine. So the first matter is going to be Green Acres Lot 3 modification. Eric is going to be reporting for the planning department. This will be Kathy Cunningham's committee and then Ms. Wiltshire on behalf of the applicant.
And excuse me, Chair, if I could just ask if anyone, if anyone's expecting anyone with the name Ann in the waiting room, I don't know what application that pertains to.
No, but my client may call in, John McCormick, if he has comments to add.
Is there any way to find out who Ann is and what she's here on?
Not until we let her in, no, unless someone in the meeting knows her by name.
Well, I'll tell you what, while we're waiting for Randy to click in, why don't we take care of that so we don't leave her hanging?
Okay, Ann is coming in.
Ann? Hello, Ann? We have an Ann, not another name, right? Ann, hello?
Ann, could you identify yourself with your full name?
That's. Sounds like Randy. I heard Randy tough.
Oh, maybe that was Randy all along.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, Randy's in.
There we go. That cleared it right up.
There's an obvious sound there. I think we're all, is there, is there?
Sorry about that.
All right, let's get going. Eric, take off.
Sure. This is an application to amend the covenants and restrictions on a property which prohibit the expansion of building coverage by limiting potential additions to an existing single-family residence to either finishing the basement or adding a second story. Parcel Zone A residence is just over 40,000 square feet and in its lot three of the Green Acres Minor Subdivision filed in May of 1997. Hopefully you can see my screen now. Properties improved with a roughly 800-square-foot single-family residence with bird patio and arbor and an 80-square-foot shed. The parcel is about 50% cleared with most of the clearing being on the northern portion of this rather oddly shaped lot and the southern portion remaining uncleared. This area is within the Pine Barrens, the South Fork Special Groundwater Protection Area and Suffolk County Department of Health Services Groundwater Management Zone 5, I should say. So the applicants are requesting specifically to modify paragraphs number six and number eight of the covenants and restriction which prohibit expansion of building coverage unless the existing residence is removed and a new residence is constructed within the building envelope. The planning board can amend those covenants with a majority plus one vote. The Green Acres Minor Subdivision established a building envelope on the southern portion of this irregularly shaped lot away from the area of existing development and a common driveway access was established for all three lots of the minor subdivision in close proximity to the residence on Lot 3, which is the subject lot. Hopefully you can now see, I apologize, this isn't the clearest copy, but this is the approved minor subdivision map. Lot 3, the subject parcel is to your right and then the other two lots are to the left and this common driveway access is from Middle Highway on the northern portion there. So paragraph number five of the covenants and restrictions allows the single-family residence on the lot to remain, however, it requires that any new residence be situated within the building envelope, which you can see outlined, southern portion of Lot 3. And paragraph six provides exemptions and provisions that allow for additions to the residence on Lot 3. Again, these are restricted to improving the basement or adding a second story. The applicants are now proposing to make a ground-level addition to the residence, which would increase its footprint and building coverage in contradiction to the covenants and restriction. Whenever the board is to vote to modify a previous approval, a legitimate change of circumstances must be found. The board may wish to consult with council as to what constitutes this. The applicants, well, the addendum to the application submitted basically states that, I quoted it here, but I'll just quote the last sentence, adding a second story, the applicant, the owner, looked into adding a second story and was advised that would not be structurally feasible as the dwelling is situated on a crawl space rather than a full slab or foundation. Although it's a determination for the board to make, it would appear to the planning department that this would not represent a legitimate change of circumstances. The residence has been situated on the site prior to the adoption of zoning in 1957 and that fact would have been known to the board, the fact that it was over 39 years old, would have been known to the board in 1996 when they began their review. The standard of requiring that a change of circumstances be identified has in part been enforced in order to ensure that future boards do not undo the intentions of past boards, which is contrary to proper planning. So in conclusion, the board must first determine that a change of circumstances is present. If this is the case, then the board should decide whether or not it's in the interest of good planning to allow the modification. We do note that a condition of the minor subdivision approval would require, well, this condition, that they relocate to the building envelope, and I'll switch back to the aerial and zoom in a little bit. So again, as you can clearly see, the existing developments in the northern portion, the building envelope is now put in this southern portion. That would relocate development to this clearly, as you can see, uncleared portion of the property. I look back at aerials dating back to 1962 and this has never been cleared. And again, this is in a number of groundwater protection areas where we seek to limit clearing. So it should be noted that enforcing the previous board's decision would result in the clearing of that area. However, the board at the time noting that, I shouldn't say noting it, but I would assume to at least remedy that situation and ensure compliance with the clearing restrictions. Paragraph five of the covenants and restrictions requires full revegetation of the area of development on the northern portion of the property with obviously the, the exception of the common driveway. It appears clear that the, by the specific nature of the conditions and restrictions, that the intention of the board in 1996 was to cap any expansion of the footprint and building coverage in the area of development in the northern portion of the lot and to relocate it to the southern portion of the lot by establishing that building envelope. Although it's not specifically detailed in the board's approval, this appears most likely to be in order to remove residential development from the narrow constrained northern portion of the lot, which is also in close proximity to the common driveway. We also note that this area at the building line is about 78 feet in width. You'd have to deduct the 20 feet in width for the common driveway. The minimum side yard setbacks here are 12 and a half feet to get setback relief due to the four tenths rule. So you're really only dealing with an area of about 30 feet here, even if they're going basically right up to the, the common driveway, 30 feet in width for development. So it seems that that was probably something that was behind the enacting of these covenants and restrictions and the idea of relocating development. So I think that's probably what warranted the board's decision back then to do that. At the very least, the board should consider that the applicant's current request to modify paragraphs number six and number eight would not necessarily prevent future protection to the uncleared southern portions of Lot 3 unless some new form of protection was required at this time, for example, a scenic easement or establishment of a new building envelope. And basically what I'm getting at is, you know, technically they're allowed to, to clear within that building envelope right now. So unless you have some kind of provision that, you know, if you're going to be undoing essentially this intention to relocate development here, some kind of protection of this area should be debated and considered if the board is going to grant the modification. But again, just to reiterate in closing, you should determine whether or not there is a legitimate change of circumstances and then determine for the consensus on whether or not you want to grant this modification.
Thank you very much. I'll follow the report on it. Matter with some history to it. So the applicant, Ms. Wiltshire.
Yes. So, so yeah, we consider the change of circumstance, the fact that a property's changed ownership and the person that has purchased it is going to be retiring here full-time or actually has, does not want to have a second story. The house won't support a second story, does not want to clear the back lot, does not want to, it's all a great big expense for him if he can't just add a bedroom. He wants to add a master bedroom and a bathroom to the front or the back of the house. So the width of the lot really has nothing to do with it. And we contend that on the clear front part of the lot, we can also fit easily accessory structures like a lap pool or a garage or a septic upgrade and without disturbing the pristine forest in the back of the lot. The other, the other change of circumstance is that lots two and three behind this property have been developed with Lot 2 looking directly into the prescribed building envelope and that woman does not want to see a house there either. So it's both neighbors saying, why would we do that? It's, first of all, it'd be too expensive for my client. He can't, they tear down his existing house and clear the woods and build a new house. He'd end up selling and someone else would be doing that redevelopment project. So it's our position that the change of circumstances is that the ownership change, the person that's living there is full-time and retired, the, the lot behind it was developed, which it wasn't at the time, and I don't see any reason why to have to clear pristine woodland when we can easily fit without any variances the structures that we would like to add to the property in the front part of the lot that's already cleared. The other thing is that I, I don't think we'd have to do anything to protect the back lot. I mean, we could do a covenant that says that no clearing of the, that part of the property can, will be done unless in conjunction with the demolition of the front house and, and construction of a rear house pursuant to the covenants that already exist.
Okay, thanks, thanks very much. Kathy, this is yours. Go right ahead.
Well, thank you, Lori, for that explanation and thank you, Eric, for a well-detailed memo. We don't, I, this is my seventh year on the board and I think that we maybe entertained a change of a covenant and restriction once or twice. It's a very rare event in my experience. And we did do it once, but the change of circumstances, I didn't vote for it, just for the record, but the change of circumstances in that case was that a, the zoning had changed in the area and, you know, the proposed clearing and the groundwater recharge was, was a different equation than had been the case at the time the covenants and restrictions were written. And that's my only guide for taking this really big step to change a legal agreement that a prior board had made. And while I have empathy for Lori's client, it's expensive to do all the things. These were the covenants and restrictions on this. It's completely counter to mostly any other position I've ever taken to, you know, permit, to be in a position to, to see this natural woodland have to be cleared to accommodate this. But I really do feel a duty bound to respect the original board's decision-making on this because this is such an unusually shaped lot. And I just don't, I just can't in good conscience agree that, that the change of circumstances as presented by the applicant are, are sufficient to override that and change those. So I'm sorry, I don't, I can't, I can't support it as presented.
Does anybody else have anything they want to weigh in on, any other board members?
Yeah, I, I do. I, I just wanted, you know, I, I'm not an engineer, I'm not a builder, but I have had experience with building a second story on a house that sits on a crawl space, not a basement or, or a flat concrete slab, but a crawl space. So I'm not, I'm not sure that what the applicant says that they can't go up one floor because it's on a crawl space. I would question that. I'm not making a definitive statement, but like I said, I have had experience with that and I know that it can be done without knowing the particulars of this, of this particular house. So that's, you know, that's the only thing that, and as far as the change of circumstance, I agree with Kathy. I can't, besides what Kathy said, I don't know if change of circumstance means that someone's, the owner's lifestyle has changed and that would be considered a change of circumstance. I don't know if we get, need to get a legal opinion on that, but my understanding is that that would not qualify as a change of circumstance. So those are my two comments.
You know, I think that it wasn't a matter of the owner, the current owner having a change in lifestyle. I think it was a change of owner. Am I correct on that, Lori?
It's both. It's a change of owner and the fact that the owner's now retiring full-time to this location.
But when did the current owner buy the property?
I'm not sure exactly, but I'd say within the last 10 years.
Yes, so, I mean, he's owned it for 10 years. So basically the change of circumstance is that he's now retired.
Correct, it needs, it needs additional space. That's right.
I, I gotta say that from my, just looking at myself, you know, the, 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 the lot is so oddly configured that that strikes me as, you know, something that mitigates in favor of the request. But on the other hand, I, I, I'm with Kathy on this. I, you know, we don't lightly change covenants and restrictions. I mean, this is something that all, you know, people build their lives around these covenants and restrictions. And whether, and I agree with Lou also, that the change in circumstance, you know, I mean, I, it's not like they changed the code on you. That might be considered a change in circumstance, but not on you, but on the applicant. So it's, it's a, you know, it's a tough, it's a, it's a tough ask all around. Does anyone else have anything they want to add on this particular application?
Yeah.
All right, let me get, let me get, let me get Ed and then Randy.
Okay.
All right, yeah, thanks, Randy. Yeah, just wanted to support Lou's thoughts on this. You know, I am a builder and you, you, you know, I don't know the specific circumstances of this foundation, but it is, you know, usually possible to add a second floor. Not that it's going to be inexpensive to do it, but it, you know, it is possible. It may require beefing up the footings. I'm, I'm not going to advise the owner on, on exactly how we can approach that, but I think it's doable. And certainly a lot cheaper than tearing, you know, tearing down the house and building it within the building envelope, for sure. So, you know, I think, you know, both parties to this can be accommodated by pursuing that route with perhaps with a, with some advice from a different architect or engineer. I think it can be done. I do have a question though. Is this northern part of the, of the lot also in water recharge, Eric?
No.
It is, Lori, it's not?
Yeah, it's not.
Okay. All right, so that's it, that's all.
Randy, go right ahead.
Yeah, so I, first of all, to disclose that I worked for the people that subdivided this in whatever, 96. They are no longer the owners. I don't own that business anymore and I don't feel like I'm biased about it. And I would agree with what everyone said. I think the covenant says specifically that it allows work on the basement too. So you could, if you needed to, you could put a new foundation that would support a second floor. And I, I have to agree that I think change of circumstances is not, it's not something, the fact that the, the, the other two lots are developed or that there's a new owner or that he's retiring, I don't think are the types of changes. Those are, those are changes that are pretty much anticipated. You know, there's a minor subdivision, there's two vacant lots. I think, I, I agree with everybody that I think a change in zoning or, you know, the location of a landfill next door, something like that, that really changes the whole picture. But so I agree that I think taking a look at either picking, you know, I picked the house up. I, I had the Dawn movers come from West Hampton. You pick the house up, move it on the lot, build a new foundation, put the house back on it. So it is possible to do that and, and create a, a second floor, a partial second floor. On the other hand, I'd have to say if the owner was willing to put an easement on that whole undeveloped portion of the lot, that to me, that to me does sound like a, a good exchange, but I just don't think it meets the change circumstance.
Yeah, that, that occurred to me also. I mean, especially if you're saying that the, the neighbors, you know, are relying on that property being vacant, that southern portion. Let me, let me see, Sharon or Ian, you guys want to chime in on this one?
No, I mean, I think everybody has said, you know, I have the same thoughts. You know, when the property was purchased, you know, the covenants and restrictions were there. So, you know, the limitations were there and he, they, you know, they were aware of them. So, um, yeah, no, I think it's possible to call it a flaw on that just based on my experiences from building as well.
I'd like to add something when Ian's done, if Ian has anything to add.
Go, Ian, if you want to go ahead.
Yeah, not, not much to add. You know, I had a lot to say, but you guys have said most of it. I don't quite understand the planning principles, to be honest with you, that guided that original decision. But as Randy said, everything that, you know, has happened since was totally anticipatable. So, you know, building a house in a vacant lot and I, I just don't see the change of circumstance. If this was a blank slate, I would not have planned it the same way, but that's not what we're being asked.
So my, my comment then is, my comment then is that obviously you're not going to allow us to expand the house, but the covenants also prohibit the installation of accessory structures. And why would we want to encourage the clearing of the land in the back for accessory structures when we can actually put them on the front lot easily? I can even, I even have a pool envelope for a lap pool. I, I can place a garage, a septic upgrade and a, and a lap pool on the front part of the lot and not clear anything. Would you consider changing the covenants in that regard?
Well, I mean, that's not what you have up in front of us right now and I don't think that's appropriate, you know, time or place to get into that debate. I mean, if you want to put in a proposal that goes there, you know, I mean, I suppose you could. At the same time, you know, I think Randy, he, he mentioned, and I know I just said it again, you know, that, that southern portion of the property, it kind of looks like something that might, you know, give you some flexibility and some kind of future idea. Maybe, may, I'm not making any promises by any means, but maybe there's something there that, you know, be worth considering. But again, I'm not making any promises one way or the other. And I have no idea how the rest of the board might feel about that.
So what do you mean, what do you mean by put forth a proposal?
You've got a big chunk of land there that feels that, you know, theoretically you could move a house to, and I'm not going to plan for you.
No, I understand that, but are you asking me to keep this open and do a plan and submit it?
No, no, well, I was going to go to the questions, which I think is going to be pretty self-aware in this application. And, and then, you know, you want to talk to the client, think about what you want to do. We really only have one question and that is, is there a change in circumstances?
Right.
That we would consider to grant the application. And I don't think that anybody's saying that there would change circumstances. Somebody else? Trying to get in there and I was monopolizing the microphone. Kathy, was that you?
I'm sorry, I couldn't answer your question.
Well, the question for the board is, is a change of circumstance present? And based on everything that I heard from everybody on the board, it didn't sound like there was any sentiment.
No, I think, yeah, I think the answer was no in that.
So.
Is there, is there any other way to modify the old subdivision approval?
That's a, that's a real, you know, really, you know, messing with the primal forces of nature to do that.
Yeah, if you did, if you did, for example, you did a lot line modification, I don't know, I'm not sure that a majority plus one vote to amend the covenants. I'm wondering if that's the only way to come at this, but that's.
Randy, that's, that's, that's what I'm saying. I can't do it for the applicant, neither can you, but the, the, the threshold question here is, is there a change in circumstances? And it's unanimous on this board that this is not a change of circumstances. Well, we want to, well, plan it some other way to achieve whatever it is that the applicant has in mind, or, you know, you can do that. But I don't think that, you know, you're not getting past this threshold question on this. All right. Does anyone have anything you want to add?
Oh, thank you.
Applicant, Lori, do you have anything you want to add?
No, I'll go back to my client and regroup on this and then we'll perhaps approach it from a different angle.
That's it. Okay, very well.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next one is Hand Lane South. And this is the main voyage of our new planning department staff member, William Highland. So Will, take it. And it's over, actually, before we go, who's the applicant on this?
Me.
Britain.
Yeah, ah, Britain, oh, welcome. Okay, very good. So in this screen, we have Will and Kathy, this is yours again, you have the committee. All right, go ahead.
Welcome, Will.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to share my screen so you guys see the aerial. All right, you should, you should be seeing it now. Okay, this is a sub wave or application to divide the original parcel into two individual lots. The original parcel of 42,855 square feet will be divided into Lot 1 consisting of 20,493 square feet as shown on the survey. And Lot 2. lot two consisting of twenty-two thousand three hundred sixty-two square feet minus the proposed flag space for one of two driveway entrances. The property is zone B residence, which must contain a minimum of twenty thousand square feet. The lots meet the minimum lot area and lot with requirements for the B residence zoning district. All of the existing structures will be removed, so there are no issues with setback requirements. Both lots are entirely cleared and the clearing is considered pre-existing. The S C D H S regulations require a one hundred fifty-foot separation between wells and septic systems. The map indicates that both of the proposed and all the surrounding lots are on public water. Therefore, this requirement will not be an issue. In addition to the project's plan to demolish the existing structure in a new subdivision, the existing septic tanks will be removed and are required to be replaced with new low nitrogen sanitary systems under chapter two-ten of the town code. Uh, the existing water services for the existing structure are to be abandoned in favor of the new proposed water services for the proposed new single-family residences on the lots. For the driveway, the current plan for the site intends for the applicant to relocate the existing driveway as well as to construct the second one in order for both lots to have their own entrance way, as you can see here on the survey. The planning board's policy has been generally to encourage common driveways to reduce curb cuts and entrance ways. It, it also should be noted, as you'll see on the aerial here when I zoom in, that in the front of the existing site, there is a significant tree located near the area where the second driveway would most likely be paved. And it might need to be removed if the current, uh, existing site plan is approved. The planning department suggests that a common driveway might allow that existing significant tree to be preserved. And additionally, a driveway profile that complies with chapter, uh, two-twenty's driveway standards should be provided on the map. The fire marshal has reviewed the proposed project, they've found that no additional protection is required as the proposed project is within one thousand feet of public water that provides adequate water supply for any potential firefighting. No, no further review under secret is required, it's a type-two action pursuant to secret in chapter one-twenty of the town code. So in conclusion, the applicant should make note of the issues regarding the relocation and construction of the proposed driveways as well as the potential displacement of the significant onsite tree and the possibility of maybe constructing a common driveway that would be in the interest of good planning and incorporate them into the site plan if necessary.
Very good. Thank you very much. And, uh, this is Ms. Bistrian, go right ahead. You're the applicant?
Good evening, Chairman Crime members of the board. First, I want to say welcome to Will. Um, this is a pretty impressive first memo, so.
I should have said that.
I've been doing it a long time. So I'm Britten Bistrain here, representing the owners of one fifteen Hand Lane in Amagansett, um, which is in front of you for a subdivision waiver in the creation of two conforming lots. Um, the parcel is on the east side of Hand Lane, a few lots north of its intersection with Bluff Road. The lot is currently improved to the residence, which was constructed in approximately nineteen eighty. And prior to that, uh, the property was farmed, it was part of a larger, larger parcel, uh, owned by the Edwards family and was actually accessed off of Atlantic Avenue, you know, in the, took the decades ago. Uh, the application is to divide the one acre parcel into two conforming B residence lots. The project meets all dimensional zoning requirements, does not contain any natural features or slopes, serviced by public water, and has adequate street frontage. I reviewed the planning department memo with my client, and we're in agreement with the suggestion to create a common, uh, sorry, driveway easement, common driveway um, in the flag portion of the lot two, and thereby not increase the number of access points onto Hand Lane. In addition, that would allow us, as, um, Will pointed out, that, um, it will also save that existing tree. I will note that the tree is not contained within our parcel, so we don't actually own it. Um, it's in the road right of way, so we can't coven in its location, but we're happy to move the driveway so as not to impede it and hopefully that doesn't get diseased and the town doesn't cut it down. But, um, in summation, it's a pretty straightforward application, conforming subdivision. We agree with the comments of the planning department, we'll add the, um, the driveway section and hope that the board feels that once we revise the plan for the driveway, we could be deemed complete. Um, I don't think there's a lot for us to address on this one, but I'm, I'm stand ready to listen to the board's comments. Thank you.
Very well, thank you. Kathy?
Yeah, thanks, Britten, that's great news. I appreciate that. I think the common driveway was really my main, um, my main proposal, and I think that would, that would work well. You know, we do try to cut down on curb cuts and even though I know that's not a highly trafficked area for the most part, it's just nicer to see one driveway instead of two. I think that would work great. Um, the only other, uh, question I have is there's another really pretty tree, uh, an old-looking one on the land, and I wonder if there's any way of, um, you know, configuring the new construction to preserve that. It's, um, I know it's, I, I, I can't, I can't, I don't know where it is in relationship to the, um, proposed construction here.
I, I think it's smack dab in the middle of the building envelope.
Oh, true.
Unfortunately.
Alright, well, that, that sort of puts the kibosh on that unless it can be moved somehow. I just hate to see those big old trees, uh, taken down, but if it's in the building envelope, then I guess there's, there's no other way around it, because these are not.
I know it doesn't matter all that much, but it is not a native tree, it was a planted specimen tree.
I know.
Whereas the one on the street, um, is, is a native tree.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah. No, that's fine. I mean, if it can't be done, it can't be done. I, I can accept that. I, I know how this goes. I too was married to a builder for twenty-three years, so I get the whole building thing also. But anyway, okay, well, I think, you know, this meets the lot requirements. I think Will did a fantastic job, well done, sir, on, uh, this memo and, um, I, given that the, um, applicant has already agreed to the flat, to the, uh, common driveway, I would, um, you know, propose moving forward.
Good. Once again, does anyone on the board have anything they'd like to add on this particular application?
I, I, my only question, I, I agree with Kathy. My only question is, should we, should we show that tree on the revised survey with the common driveway just to make sure it's out of the way?
Can she do that? It's not part of the, the property.
Well, this shows.
I, I mean, the, the existing driveway to the house is shown on this survey, and the tree is south of the existing driveway, and the driveway that we're proposing is to the north, so I don't think that's a necessary. It's, um, I don't know if you visited the site, Randy, but it's.
No, I didn't.
Okay, I think if you take a drive-by, you'll see that, um, there's no way that we could impact that tree if we use the north driveway entrance for both lots.
Right, you know, I, I, I visited it and that, that's, that's true, that's correct.
Has anyone had anything else that they want to add on this particular one? There are none. Should the planning board consider a common driveway to reduce curb cuts and entrance ways and to preserve the existing tree? And I guess that in science, there is humanity in that. And, uh, should the applicant provide a driveway profile that complies with chapter two-twenty driveway standards to be put on the map? I think that, you don't have, do you have any issue with that?
No, that's a, that's a standard request, um, we'll absolutely add it.
Great. Yay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Britten.
Thanks, Britten.
Once again, we have Will, who, I'm sorry, I read this memo, and this is a terrific memo. You know, getting ahead of it. Uh, we have Ed, uh, is the committee and, um, who, I apologize for not knowing off the top of my head, who is the applicant on this? Who the applicant's representative on this?
I am, um, Shannon from Dewey's Planning.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Thank you. Okay, so, um, Will, Will, why don't you take us through this one? Will?
Oh, yeah, hang on, I'm just trying to figure out, so I was trying to switch the, uh, because I'm going right from one to the other, I'm trying to.
Okay.
Hang on one second.
Are you all like frozen up?
Uh, yeah, it was from the screen. Okay, it should, okay, it should be there now, okay. Okay, so, uh, this, uh, this is a, uh, revised survey for an application that was originally submitted in January two thousand twelve for a sub waiver. Uh, it is an application to divide the original parcel into three individual lots, as you can see on the survey. Uh, the original parcel, uh, will be divided into lot one, consisting of eighty-five thousand three hundred four square feet, including the proposed scenic easement. Uh, lot two consisting of eighty-four thousand two hundred ninety-three square feet, and lot three consisting of eighty-four thousand three square feet after excluding a proposed flag space and access strip. The property is zoned A two residence, which must contain a minimum of eighty-four thousand square feet, and it's situated off of Montauk Highway, as you can see at the top of the graphic in Wind Scott. Uh, the property contains one existing one-story residence. The survey recently submitted uh, met with planning department's request to, uh, depict the proposed subdivision on the survey of the property as this is, and has also been revised to depict the existing clearing lines and calculations of existing clearing for the proposed lots. Uh, the building envelopes that merely represented setback requirements, which was on the original site plan, have been removed, and the existing wells and sanitary systems are now shown on the survey. However, uh, on this revised survey, there are still some map provisions that need to be made for it to move forward, including the following, uh, the applicant has provided additional clearing calculations as stated earlier. Lot two and lot three both meet the requirements of being under the maximum allowed clearing. However, with lot one, it is not clear whether the three thousand square foot square feet proposed to be revegetated, once the existing asphalt driveway, as depicted here, is removed, counts towards the thirty thousand five hundred square feet of existing clearing outlined on the survey. If not, lot one will be in conformance with zoning unless revegetation would not be necessary, but if so, a revegetation plan should be submitted, and the area to be revegetated should be indicated on the map. Additionally, the lot lines remain confusing and undefined, and the bold lines used for the access easement, as you can see here, make it look like its own lot rather than a common driveway to be shared by the other lots. The, the planning department pointed out that it's not clear from the revised survey whether the applicants are proposing a flag strip and a common driveway to provide access to all three lots. Uh, the planning department received comments from the fire marshal indicating that the driveway for the proposed project does not need to cover either the town of East Hampton or the New York State Fire Codes. In the site plan and subdivision review for the project, uh, the fire marshal found the following deficiencies regarding the site, uh, as outlined in chapter two-twenty of the East Hampton Town Code. All common driveways shall be constructed with an emergency vehicle, vehicle turnaround area at the terminus of the driveway, which again, it's kind of not clear from the current survey what, you know, where exactly the end of the common driveway is. Uh, and the current survey depicts the emergency turnaround at the intersection of lots one and two, as you can see here. Per chapter two-twenty, uh, common driveway is greater than five hundred feet in length, also must be constructed with a minimum of one interim emergency vehicle turnoff area. And, uh, in the future, just for future reference and in the future interest of the site, should it ever be planned to occupy four buildings or more on its three lots, to be mindful of whether the common driveway should meet the design requirements of fire apparatus access codes as outlined in chapter five-eleven of the New York State Fire Code. So in conclusion, in order for the application to proceed, the map provisions regarding the clear definition of the lot lines, whether the applicant is proposing a flag strip and common driveway easement for access, and whether a revegetation plan will have to be submitted regarding proposed vegetation of the, where the existing asphalt driveway is now will need to be made. And additionally, issues with the proposed common driver from the fire marshal regarding its compliance with both the town code and the New York State Fire Codes should be addressed at some point.
Thank you very much, Will, again, terrific memo.
Thank you.
I stand here on.
Awesome, um, so as, um, Will pointed out in his memo, the, um, three thousand square feet from the existing driveway that's going to be abandoned, um, will need to be revegetated, so we'll work on putting together a planting plan. Um, I'll reach out to Will to see what type of plants he would like, um. The canopy does seem to still be intact in where it was cleared for the driveway, so I would imagine it'll mainly consist of like shrubbed or ground covered, like low blueberry bushes. And then, um, we'll also be requesting revisions from the surveyor, because we agree that, um, the way the common driveway is depicted right now is pretty confusing because it isn't going to be a separate lot, it really should be a dashed line. Um, and so right now that we're proposing the common driveway to be about, um, four hundred and eighty feet long, so that it would terminate um, in between lot one and lot two, and so that's why the turnaround is there. Um, and then it would be a flag strip to access lot three. And so, since it's less than five hundred feet for that common driveway, um, I don't believe that we are required to have the turnoff area. And then we've also noted the fire marshal's comments about needing a fire, um, apparatus access road. But I don't believe that there'll be four dwellings occupied on this, on these three lots. And so, I think that's pretty much all that I have based on this memo.
Hey, very good. Ed?
Um, yeah, thanks, Will, again, great job on this. Uh, thanks for your comments, Shannon, appreciate it. Yeah, a couple, a couple of things, you know, you know, uh, Will has pointed out a few kind of housekeeping things that need to be done here, and you've addressed some of them, Shannon. Uh, you know, including just clarifying that the clearing issue on lot one, particularly around that old driveway, you've kind of already kind of filled us in on what your intentions are about that. Uh, but, you know, the lot line clarifications are still a little confusing to me, because and, and by the way, I really appreciate the idea of having a common driveway here as opposed to having two or even three driveways come in off of Montauk Highway, but I, I was under the impression that the way that that happened was it would essentially be an easement across lots one and two when it's a common driveway of that type, right? And so the lot lines would be depicted as, you know, going straight across in, in each instance, right? That it's sort of.
Yeah, I think like lot one lot line really should be all the way, um, east to the property line, and so we need to fix that up on the survey.
Okay. But isn't it true, so it should be shown, Will, I believe, as an, as an easement essentially, right, across the, of those first two properties, right?
Um, Lou, I mean, there, there are, and there are two ways of doing it. You could have a flag strip going all the way down to Montauk Highway from flag lot three, and then you would have a common driveway easement or access easement over that flag strip, or you can have the lots, normally what we're, what we've been, um, board has been asking for are that the lots extend to the, um, that would be to the, I guess, the easterly property line with an access easement over each of the lots.
Right.
To three, so there are really two ways to do it, but we normally have been doing it the second way, the way you're describing.
Yeah, so that's sort of what I was saying, was that, sort of that method of looking at it. So does that change the, uh, you know, it seems like, you know, we're, there's adequate, um, square footage for each of these lots as it is, but does doing that change those calculations? I guess it does, because this is shown, the, um, coverage of the area is shown separately here, right?
It, it shouldn't change the, uh, square footage, the applicant should address that, because the, I don't know, that, that driveway doesn't seem to be included in any of the lots now, so by putting an access easement over it, it may not, may not change the lot areas.
Okay. Yeah, I wasn't sure whether if it's, you know, an access easement, whether under which circumstances does the common driveway calculate into, um, lot area?
Whether it's a flag or a common driveway or an access easement, they all get excluded from lot area.
Okay, okay, alright. So there might be some modifications, some, some amendments that need to be made to the lot sizes, I guess, but it doesn't really ultimately affect you know, the validity of having three lots on this parcel. So I think we're, we're good in that respect. So, you know, I appreciate that you're, that you're proposing going under the maximum clearing. This is a really nice wooded parcel. I've been kind of, you know, thinking, watching this parcel over the years, thinking somebody's going to develop this into a couple of lots someday soon, and sure enough, here it is. So, thanks for being sensitive to the, to the, to the wooded nature of this, this property. Uh, that's really it. I mean, otherwise I'm, I'm supportive of, uh, of the application and, uh, you know, just look forward to getting your amendments. and, uh, you know, just look forward to getting your amendments.
Yes. Um, I, I just said before, I turn over to the rest of the board, a question. You, you'd mentioned the possibility of four residences on this lot, and I wonder, what, what's the circumstances that would allow for that?
That's, I wasn't really sure. It was just, it was mentioned in the memo that if there's four buildings occupied on these three lots, that we would need the fire apparatus access roads, but I don't really see the possibility of that happening.
All right, so, so that, that, yeah, I want to make sure that that's not going to happen.
Coming back to the memo, yeah.
All right, very good. Uh, does any other board member wish to weigh in on this?
I, I have a question, just from, I don't, I, I don't understand something, so I'm just, just curious. Uh, so, the common driveway, you say, is for lot one and two, with the turnaround at the, in, at the center of the two lots, at the borderline of the two lots. So, how would, how would you get to lot three? I mean, do you just, why isn't that considered part of the common driveway?
Because at that point, it would, um, be its own driveway for the single lot.
Oh, okay, so it's, but, okay, but it's common up until you get to the point of that turnaround or beyond that turnaround, then it becomes its own driveway? I see. You're saying it's common on one and two, because you, you make a turn into either of one or the number two lot? I, I get it now. Okay, thank you.
Common for three.
Yeah, yeah, I get it. Okay.
All right. Does anyone else have anything they want to weigh in on this?
I just had a quick question. Um, is, is this in, and I, I want to thank the applicant, Shannon, for, uh, again, also being sensitive to the, um, clearing there, because this lot has, you know, been wooded for such a long time, but is it in the, I'm trying to think of which watershed it's in. Is it in the Georgic Pond watershed or the Waynescott Pond watershed? It must be in one of those watersheds, right?
Don't think it's in an overlay district for one of the watersheds, but-
Right.
We'll get to that for the next time.
Okay. That'd be good to know.
Yeah, it's something which it's closer to. You know, it may be like somewhat of a distance, but-
It may what?
I'm, 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 I know exactly where this lot is, and I'm just trying to think which pond is closer.
Yeah, that's exact, that's where I'm stuck too. I, I don't know.
You know, Georgic is probably closer, because Georgic goes all the way up to-
And it also scoops way out too, so, um, but anyway, it would be good to know that, I think.
Georgic is definitely closer.
Yeah, yeah, you're right, you're right. All right, so, uh, so, I think the question, unless somebody else has anything they want to add?
There's no, there's no way, there's no way to access this other than Montauk Highway, right?
The residence is down the next street.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, it's only Montauk, which is why it has to be-
Same thing, Randy.
Yeah, that's why you only want one driveway. So, all right, should the planning board consider requesting further changes to the survey? Done that, including clarifying the nature of the lot lines, delineating the lots from the common driveway, and whether a revegetation plan needs to be submitted for lot ones to be removed asphalt driveway, so.
Yes.
Yeah, that's, uh, we're all good with that. And should the planning board consider addressing the concerns of the fire marshal regarding location of the emergency vehicle turnaround, possible construction of an interim emergency vehicle turnoff area, and potential updating the common, potential updating the common driveway, so it shall meet the design requirements of fire apparatus access roads?
Yes, yes.
I think that's pretty essential to, to determine this particular parcel's size. So, this is, listen, this is a, like, you know, one of the last big, not huge, but one of the last big parcels uh, in, in this particular part of town, so, you know, want to do it carefully and do it right. So, thank you to the applicant. Sounds like we're all on the right path here.
Do we need a, we're gonna, do they need a curb cut permit from the state DOT, or?
We admitted an application to them already.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Okay. All right, next is, uh, eighty Firestone Bluff Crest Cottage. Ordinarily Brian would be covering, Brian Frank would be covering this, but, uh-
I, I'll take care of it.
Eric's going to do it, all right. Lou, you're the committee on this, and, uh, the applicant is, uh, is it Joe?
I'm here. Yes, I'm here.
Yes, Joe, okay, very good. Okay, um, this should be short and sweet, so.
Sure, yeah. Um, so, I'm sure the board remembers the conversation from last week. Uh, the remaining issue was that the applicants had to make a notation change on the, the plan, specifically the length to the landscaping, um, note, um, noting the spacing, um, of the bayberry plants. They have made that change. Um, we find it complete. The board should determine if it agrees, and we do have a resolution on for you tonight to schedule a public hearing, um, if you'd like to do so as well.
Yeah, I, I think we could jump to that afterwards, assuming that there isn't any, um, uh, or any issues that might come up. Uh, Mr. Halsey, you want to add anything?
No, I'm good. As long as you guys are all happy, I'm happy.
Very good. And Lou, uh, do you have anything you want to add, or?
Um, I'm happy too.
Okay, well, would, would, would you, in fact, be happy to read the resolution, schedule in the public hearing, so that Mr. Halsey can go home?
Sure.
Or click off anyway.
I am home.
Click off.
Okay, you, you ready for it?
Are we ready? Go ahead, you're on.
In the matter of the application of eighty Firestone Bluff Crest Cottage's site plan special permit, Suffolk County Tax Map Number three-zero-zero-dash-one-seven-dash-one-dash-five. Uh, this is a notice of a schedule, to schedule a public hearing, uh, dated May fifth, twenty-twenty-one.
And, um-
You've read the resolution.
I read the resolution. I, so, for it's, uh-
Lou, does it give you a date for the hearing?
What's the date on the public hearing?
A public hearing is hereby scheduled Wednesday, June ninth, twenty-twenty-one at seven P M.
Okay, that's, that's the key. All right, is there a sec?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed? There you go. All right, Mr. Halsey.
Thank you all. All right, thanks y'all. Good night.
All right, take care. Okay, next we have, um, we're going to jump down to the artist studio application. We, we have, and tell me if I get this wrong, uh, Mr. Sebastian's, and again, I apologize if I-
No, it's perfect. Thank you.
I hope I came close. Um, we have, I believe, a wrap-up memo tonight on that, uh, which Marco is going to bring, uh, and, uh, the applicant is not represented by anybody, correct?
Correct.
Uh, and Lou, you're the committee on this one. So Marco, take it away.
Um, yes, so, uh, this is an application to construct a six-hundred-square-foot artist studio. Uh, we discussed this, uh, through multiple evaluations. Uh, I'm just going to show very quickly where the property is and aerial. Uh, a public hearing was held. Uh, there was one written comment, um, in a form of email, speaking in support of the application. It was, uh, Charles D. Johnston and John Crocker the third. Uh, they identified themselves as neighbors at one-thirty-six and one-forty-three Merchants Path, which is adjacent to the subject parcel. Um, they basically stated that the structure would have minimal impact on their properties and, uh, minimal impact to the character of the neighborhood. Uh, no other comments were, uh, made in regards, were submitted in regards to the, uh, artist studio. Uh, and so, in conclusion, provide the board agrees, the application is ready for approval.
Very good. Is the applicant have anything he wishes to add?
Oh, uh, just hoping for a positive, uh, conclusion to this.
Very good. Okay, um, Ed, did I say this yet?
Oh, it's mine.
Oh, I'm sorry, Lou, my, my, my error. Sorry about that, Lou.
That's okay. Yeah, I agree with the planning department that the application is ready for approval. I have nothing else to add.
Okay. Does anyone have anything else to add?
No, just to thank the applicant, it was a very clean submission, really made it easy for us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, uh, do I need a, a vote? Jamison, do I need a vote on this to approve for, just because it's an artist studio, or it's anything special with it? In terms of being a, uh, ready for, Mark, ready for approval? Hello?
I don't think so. Won't you, are you going to draft the approval and then vote on it? Make a motion when it's ready for?
Yes.
So, all right, so, uh, Marco, how quickly can we get that done?
Uh, the resolution can be on for the next meeting.
Very good.
All right, great.
Next week, right? Yeah.
Yeah, next week. We have a meeting next week. Jody?
Yep.
Uh, yes.
Very good. Okay, so, yeah, I hope you can stay tuned next week. You'll get the vote, and you'll know where we're going.
There's a bunch of-
Thank you very much.
Bunch of covenants, right, that have to be, are those covenants a, uh, condition of the C O or the building permit? All those artist studio covenants?
They'll be in there, yes.
Yep. So they'll be in, well, they'll be a condition of the approval.
Right.
And then, what does it say? Does it say they have to be recorded before there's a C O or something? Anyway.
You know, we, we don't have our usual attorney this week, and I don't want to, um, uh, make Jamison know.
I would guess, that would make sense, Randy. I think he can probably file for the building permits, but that he would have to show proof that it's recorded with the county, the covenants, prior to getting a C O, would be my guess.
Yeah, that's usually how it works.
All right. Well, we'll have a plan for you and a path for you next week, though, when, uh, we're all back here on that, for the approval. All right, thank you again very much. Um, did you have anything you want to add, applicant?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Very good, very well. Okay, next is Lucila, let's, got him, showing everybody's name today. Lucila D'Agostino's Artist Studio. We have, uh, Eric is the, uh, planning department on this. Ed, you're the committee, and is the applicant here? I see the applicant waving. Hello. Do you have representation?
I do. I, John.
Oh, yes, I'm next to you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, John Huber here.
Mr. Huber, welcome.
Nice to see you.
Hi, Mr. Huber.
Um, well, nice to see you. I'm well. Hi, everyone.
Hi, welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome back, I should say.
Thank you.
All right, Eric, why don't you take us through this one?
Sure. This, this is an application to permit interior alterations to an existing artist studio, which will increase the gross floor area. The artist studio was originally approved in two thousand eight and consists of two eight-foot-by-forty-foot shipping containers. Uh, the artist studio is situated on concrete foundation with a partially improved basement, um, totaling four-hundred-and-two square feet. That's the basement portion. Um, uh, bringing the total gross floor area between the first floor and the basement to one-thousand-and-forty-two square feet. Um, the subject parcel is just shy of eighty-thousand square feet. In lot area, it's situated on Red Dirt Road in Springs, Zone A Residence, and is within the water recharge overlay district, as well as the special groundwater protection area and the Suffolk County Prime Barrens. It's currently improved with a two-story, single-family residence. Um, the town code sets the regulations for artist studios that the planning board needs to review. Um, the first applicable standard is in regard to artist documentation. Uh, the board must find that the applicant qualifies as working artist within attention to the definition of fine arts. Uh, the town code requires the following documents to demonstrate that the applicant is a working artist. These include, um, a description of the applicant's art form, a professional fine art resume, documentation relevant to the, uh, applicant's art form, and then at least three letters of reference attesting to the artistic nature of the artist's work. Uh, the information related to the applicant's work that has been submitted was attached to the memo for the board's review. Um, we note that fourteen letters of reference were submitted. Um, there's also a limitation on the size of an artist studio. Uh, the town code limits the size of an artist studio to that of a legal accessory structure or six-hundred square feet, unless the applicant demonstrates to the planning board the need for a larger-sized structure. If a larger structure is proposed, then the planning board needs to determine three things. Uh, one, that the property constraints make it difficult or impractical to construct a studio that is either attached to the principal building, or to construct a studio, a detached studio, that conforms to the size of an accessory structure. The second is, um, the applicant has justified the need for a larger studio based on the applicant's art form and the scope or size of the work. And then the third and final is, um, the board needs also determine that the size is compatible with the residential neighborhood. Uh, if the board does make a finding that the larger structure is justified, um, the following additional limitations of the size of the artist studio shall apply. I won't go through all of them, but it's basically a, a size limitation, um, based on the, whether the artist studio has to be lesser than the, uh, ground floor of the residence, um, five, five percent of the lot area or two-thousand-five-hundred square feet, um, whichever is lesser in this instance. Um, that's the ground floor of the residence, which is one-thousand-and-fifty-three square feet. Um, the, uh, the artist studio proposed is one-thousand-forty-two square feet, so it is, um, does meet that standard. Um, artist studios are limited in terms of the plumbing that they can have. Um, they are allowed a sink, but no other plumbing. The applicant's, uh, floor plans do not illustrate anything other than a sink and a notation stating that no bath, shower, toilet, or plumbing other than, uh, for a sink, uh, will be permitted, uh, has been added to the plan. The sink is illustrated in the cellar slash lower level of the studio, but no drywells or other means of wastewater control have been identified or illustrated. However, it is noted that this was a previously approved artist studio with a sink, so it is assumed that provisions, uh, have been made for collection of wastewater. The applicant should clarify this issue to the board at this time. Um, as was just discussed in the previous application, um, there's a standard form of covenants and restrictions regarding the use of the artist studio that will need to be filed. And so, in summary, uh, the board first needs to consider the material submitted and whether the applicant can be considered a working artist. Uh, the applicant requests a one-thousand-and-forty-two-square-foot artist studio that exceeds the six, six-hundred-square-foot maximum size for an accessory structure allowed under zoning. Therefore, the board secondly needs to determine whether a separate structure, uh, rather than, rather than an attached, uh, an attachment to the existing residence is warranted, and whether the size of the proposed detached structure is justified based on the artist's work. Um, if these determinations are made, the proposal appears to meet the remaining regulations for an artist studio.
Thank you very much, Eric. And does the applicant wish to be heard on this?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. If I'd like, uh, I'll begin. I'll address some of the code-oriented, um, items, and then I can turn it over to Lucila to summarize sort of the work that she, she does and what her intended use, uh, for the structure is. So, the structure, um, the footprint of it was approved, uh, by two building permits and, uh, for a total of seven-hundred-and-twenty square feet, and a C O for the structure. Just so the record's clear, C O number two-eight-nine-zero-one, it was dated October twenty-eighth, two thousand thirteen, for seven-hundred-and-twenty square feet. And basically, thank you, Eric, for putting the plans up. As the board can see-
By the way, John, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I also have the, um, floor plans for, on the, the previous, you know, with the previous C O, if you need them. Just let me know.
Thank you, Eric. I appreciate that. Hopefully, I could clarify for the board, uh, what the difference is, really, and then, uh, if need, maybe we won't even need to review that. So as you can see on the, um, screen board, on the left-hand side is the lower level, and it's really a cellar. Uh, it doesn't qualify as a story, because this, this was excavated out of the natural grade, and that cellar, um, the foundation walls are less than four feet above the adjacent natural grade. Now, of that cellar area, the portion to the lower left are, uh, not usable. In the lower-left corner is storage area. It's unheated. To the right of that is a mechanical area. Above that is the sink only, and I can clarify, Eric, um, that the sink drains into the main sanitary system for the property itself. So that shouldn't be an issue. The space to the left of the sink area is nonusable. That's, um, space under the stairs. So basically, the gross floor area in this lower level, that's part of the artist studio, is four-hundred-and-two square feet, and that's the area to the upper portion that, um, Lucila can explain how this would be ideal for her work. I think she plans to use that as a darkroom area and possibly as a screening area, so that she can review, um, the photography and other work that she's recorded. Uh, then you can see the staircase comes up to the upper level. Uh, then you can see the staircase comes up to the upper level and it's a relatively narrow structure. It's sixteen feet wide. And how they achieved this was they took two eight-foot shipping containers and bolted them together to create the space. So, and this is on the right side of the screen. There's an, uh, a wood deck and there's a window to the left and then the entry. And you come in and basically, i- if you think of it, it's just like a little platform area just inside the entryway, and that goes down to the lower level I just discussed. And there's a relatively narrow corridor to get to the main workspace area. Here's the deviation between the seven hundred and two square feet for which the certificate of occupancy had been issued. Originally, uh, when that CO was issued, this workspace near the, uh, the upper portion of this floor plan was open to the area below. And there was a railing. At some point after two thousand thirteen, uh, subsequent to when the CO was issued, but prior to the time my clients purchased this property in two thousand nineteen, the floor area was extended to, um, the exterior wall and that was three hundred and twenty-two additional square feet of space. So that's really what this application is about, is to legalize this additional three hundred and twenty-two square feet of flooring that was added. And, uh, the footprint of the structure has not been altered in any way. So this dovetails in with the code because the, um, gross floor area of the ground floor area of the residence. Eric, would you be able to go to the prior sheet and the plans? So these are the elevator, correct. So this, what's on the screen now is the floor plan of the residence. It's labeled near the bottom. And as you can see near the left side, the gross floor area of this structure is one thousand fifty-three square feet. So the floor plan that is before the board for the artist studio totals one thousand forty-two square feet. So we comply with that aspect of the code. So I've covered the floor plans. I've covered that there was a, an existing CO for the structure. I've covered the deviation that we seek to legalize. Uh, we've confirmed that the sink drains into the, um, sanitary system for the house. What I'd like to do is quickly summarize, uh, Lucila's curriculum vitae. There's quite a bit of material there and I believe that back in two thousand nineteen, when this, the, uh, application materials were submitted, there was a voluminous amount of material to document Lucila's work. Uh, so what I'll do is just briefly summarize her CV. Um, she is a two thousand graduate of Syracuse University's S.I. Newhouse School of Public Communications, from which she received a Bachelor of Arts with an emphasis on photojournalism. Uh, during two thousand four and two thousand five, she traveled internationally as a professional fine arts photographer for Gallery HD, Voom, and the Art Museum Network. I'm certain that Lucila would be happy to explain in more detail what those various media outlets did. Uh, and since two thousand nine, she's displayed her work at various exhibitions in California, Florida, and New York. Aside from selling her photographs to private and corporate collectors, she works with organizations such as the American Ballet Theater to document their performers and performances. Uh, in two thousand twenty, she was nominated for an Emmy Award in connection with her work on a Food Network program, Amy Schumer Learns to Cook. And as expressed in the many letters of reference, I believe there were fourteen in total, uh, submitted on Lucila's behalf in support of the application, she's an innovator in all aspects of photography, technology, and subject matter. Um, as for justification for her proposed use of the space, uh, perhaps she would like to explain her work and her needs in connection with the use of the space.
First, I want to say, Will, you're doing a great job because it seems like Will is doing a really great job. So, oh, Will. Um, thank you so much. Um, you know, one of the reasons why, well, the main reason why we bought this house was for this studio. Um, it has been my refuge, my lifeline, and my therapy during COVID. I have nothing but gratitude for the work that I've been able to do inside of it. Um, I know the debate is about the amount of space. I wish I had more. I'm not asking you for more. Um, but it's been, um, a fantastic, uh, space to spread out in. I'm a solitary artist. I work alone. I work crazy hours. I sometimes don't like what I'm doing until about three o'clock in the morning. It's nice to be in a space where I'm not annoying the rest of my family. Um, and I can feel okay about the fact that I haven't gone to bed. Uh, right now, when you walk in this space, there's that landing area that was just mentioned. That's not really usable space, but it's usable for me in the form of being able to have large-scale art out for me to get approvals on. Some of my work is six by six, six by eight feet. Um, that hallway area at the top, um, my work has evolved to include a, a digital component. A lot of the stuff that I do is manipulated digitally, so I have a lot of screens. Um, that's how I ended up doing that work with Amy Schumer. That's how I ended up getting a primetime Emmy, the only person in COVID to get a primetime Emmy on a, on a project, which I was really proud of, um, in this area. And then the backspace up top is really where I keep tripods, lenses, um, scrims, um, ladders. I like to shoot things from above. Um, sometimes that involves two five-foot ladders with the board in between. I rest cameras on it and I get kind of that god POV. Um, so it's a great amount of space for that. When you get on the stairs, what attracted me to the downstairs is the upstairs has so much natural light and I love the natural light and sometimes that works for me, but other times it does work against me. That downstairs is a great digital screening room for me to be able to see my art large-scale on the wall without having to go through the expense of printing it and coming into the city and going to someplace in Tribeca and, um, spending money on things that I really shouldn't have spent money on before I was able to view them properly. Um, so I would love to maintain that area as a digital screening area. Um, I, I would love at some point to turn part of the downstairs into a darkroom so I can pursue developing, um, other formats on my own. I'm familiar with the developing process. I'm also familiar with the chemicals. I know how they're supposed to be disposed of. I don't plan on pouring them down sinks. I know how to use buckets. I know how to collect those solids. I live very close to, um, the community, uh, center where I would drop them off, the waste, uh, collection center. So if that, you know, came to pass, I'm very familiar on how to do that safely. Um, but above and beyond that, you know, thank you for considering this. It's really been, uh, it saved, it saved my life to be out here during COVID and to have that space. So it's been great.
The applicant does nothing else? We can move on to the committee, which is Ed.
Good. Well, thanks, everybody, for, uh, your, your thoughts on this, uh, and, um, Mr. D'Agostino, for that explanation of your work. So this is a really, a bit of a slightly unusual circumstance here, right? Um, I think it's important for everybody to understand that, you know, this approval was given for, and as, you know, as John Huber pointed out, this Brent and Eric, for another artist, right? You purchased this property with this studio on it, with its current footprint, um, with a CO for, for greater than the six hundred square feet, right? Although that number was seven hundred and twenty square feet when the CO was issued in two thousand thirteen, if I understand this correctly. And sometime between two thousand thirteen and two thousand nineteen, when you bought this property, the, the work that John described of enclosing the two-story space and putting flooring across it was done, which increased it to its current size, right? So you bought a property with, with an artist studio on it and you bought the house, as you said, because there was an artist studio on it, which had, to your knowledge, a valid CO, right? So those are the circumstances. And just to be, so I'm perfectly clear, you're not actually looking for anything additional. You're not adding, you're not, you're not renovating, you're not doing anything now except trying to legalize what exists essentially, right?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Okay. Um, so, you know, so those are the circumstances that we're dealing with here. Uh, the, the footprint, the building is there. Uh, the, the size of the building is not going to increase. So, you know, and I think that that's usually the thing that we're most concerned about when we look at, you know, buildings that are potentially outsized like this is, you know, what, what is the impact on, you know, the neighborhood, on the lot, you know, how does it, how does it relate to the house, all those kinds of things, you know? This has been, you know, been there for, you know, twelve, thirteen years. I'm quite familiar with it. I have friends that live a couple of doors down. I see this building all the time, you know, it, it's black, it blends in. You're not asking for, for any increase in square footage. So on that score, it sort of feels to me like, um, it, it becomes just sort of a legal question here, really. But in, in terms of your work, um, you know, I, I, I've looked carefully at the portfolio that you sent. I've read the letters of recommendation. It's pretty clear to me that you're a working artist. And whether we need to sort of qualify on the, uh, on, on the sort of size requirement for the kind of work that you do, it's sort of hard for us to make that determination, but it sort of feels to me from the explanation that you've given, I can understand why you want to spread out, especially when you're doing, uh, work on ladders, you know, getting a point of view from, from above and those sorts of things. I can certainly understand why you, why you might. But my feeling is that under these circumstances, um, that this was existing and was approved at a larger than six hundred square foot, get CO'd at larger than six hundred square feet years ago. Um, and unknown to you, there was a, this, this sort of alteration to the interior, uh, which changed the, the, the portion of the building dedicated to the artist's studio. It seems like a technicality to me, right? Um, so those are my thoughts on it. I certainly don't feel like we need, unless there's some particular legal reason that we need to, 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 uh, uh, beyond, I mean, does it come down to us just simply, uh, approving that the notion that, uh, Lucila needs the additional space? Is that what we're talking about here? It just, I'm not really, is that sort of what, what this comes down to? I sort of presume maybe it does. Is that true, Jamison?
I would say yes. I think that, um, that's the, uh, criteria that you, the board, would need to make a finding on if, if she demonstrated in her, uh, you know, that the need for her specific work is to have the size, you know, larger than what the code
Right.
allows.
Right.
Yeah.
I can't quite imagine what would, what would, uh, what could be done to remedy that situation under the circumstances, but okay. Um, I would say that it's a valid, you know, ask.
In other, in other words, Ed, so, uh, basically, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll poll the board and ask, we'll ask the board whether they agree that, uh, the applicant's a working artist and then whether she's, uh, successfully demonstrated the need for the increased size based on the work and the equipment, rather than, uh, just that it's already existing. Would that be accurate?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I'm curious, how did, how did this come up? How did it come to your attention? Is there, that you needed to, to come in and get, uh, legalize the other space?
I can answer that if you'd like, Lucila. So as soon as the, um, applicants purchased the property, they were very diligent about legalizing. They wanted to get an updated CO. Uh, after unreviewing the property card, there, uh, is a pool permit that's been extended and so, and there was also a front gate. I appeared before the ARB, got approval for the front gate and the deer fencing. So we were going through all of the different procedural steps necessary to get an updated CO. And that's when we learned that the artist's studio floor plan deviated somewhat from what was approved, uh, under that two thousand thirteen CO.
So you, basically, you, you, you bought it, you bought it and then updated the CO after you took title?
Yeah, they said about, said about, you know, bringing the property into compliance post, post-purchase. And, you know, during the due diligence, my due diligence, uh, in investigating the, uh, compliance steps, we really had to take a look at the artist's studio and say, what is it exactly about the structure that we need to, um, render compliant? So I had to foil all of the original plans from, uh, when it was approved under the original building permit in two thousand eight and then I, we engaged an architect to prepare the existing floor plans that we reviewed. And then we had to decipher, I actually spent some time, uh, forensic lawyering, if you will, to figure out what exactly the deviations were. And in conjunction with the architect, I was able to determine it was that three hundred and twenty-two square feet of floor on the upper level that had been added.
Boy, you guys are really thorough.
Well.
The only, the only other thing I would say, uh, is, um, is it Lucila?
Yeah.
Yep. When you, the, the, uh, I guess you, you use a private well there, probably. I don't think there's a water main.
Yeah, we have a well.
So the, the whole point about what goes down the sink, that's a very, you know, as you know, that's a very, there's a very important aquifer there in Stony Hill. And, um, that would be of, you know, the utmost importance that, that there's nothing going down the sink into that septic system that could contaminate the aquifer. And I, I hear you, that you are well aware of that and sensitive to it. I, so I don't know if, uh, you're, you're saying you don't, you don't do, you don't have a darkroom yet, so you're not doing the chemical work?
Correct. Yeah, no, spending the money and sending things out, which I'd eventually like to not do. You know, we're, we're living there and, you know, traveling back into the city to do prints is feeling more and more like a waste of my time. So, you know, I'd love to be fully functioning, you know, uh, and rather than give people my money, try to do my stuff.
Yeah, so I guess we just have to figure out, uh, with the health department, if there were, if you were gonna change what goes down the sink from plain water, soap and water to anything else.
Probably wouldn't use the sink for anything other than washing my hands, to be honest with you, because the system that I was taught is a, is a bucket and, uh, a bucket and bin system where you, when you develop it, you put the, the chemicals that are mixed out and then that becomes a solid after it evaporates and then that solid is disposed of the same way that you would dispose of like a paint can, if you're a homeowner and go to the town dump. So I would, I would handle it that way. I would still use the, you know, the municipal resources to properly dispose of that solid. The only thing that would go down the drain would be my hands soap.
So it's the stop program that stop throwing out pollutants program? Yeah, that's a great program. Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Very good. Does any other member have anything they would wish to add? Sharon, did you have something?
No, no. I, I, I think she's demonstrated, you know, just simply that the space is needed and I think we can just go with that explanation.
Okay. All right. We'll do two questions, uh, because we need to get it on the record. Does, uh, everybody agree that the applicant has, uh, demonstrated that she qualifies as a working artist?
Yes.
Yes.
This one, and then the
Like to disclose that, um, oh, I have a, a business relationship with a partner in the applicant's firm that's completely unrelated to that business. Um, I don't feel there's any conflict and I want to participate, but I do want to disclose that.
Very good. Thank you for doing that. Okay. And, uh, and the next question is, do we find, does the board find a detached, uh, artist studio the size proposed is warranted?
Yes.
Yes.
I, I, I did, I want, I, I wanted to just say something about that if I could, Sam.
Go right ahead.
Um, I, I, I don't want to be a, a thorn in the side here because, uh, my gut feeling is that this works. You know, that that, that criteria has been demonstrated, but it seems like we've gotten to it in a really circuitous way and I just want to make sure, you know, we're, um, we're, we're, we're because we haven't done that many of these, I want to make sure that our process has been, you know, that if we have to replicate this process, we'll know what we're doing. Cause it is bigger. I'm not sure that this is the size I would ordinarily, um.
I was thinking about that, you know, the thing is, this is unique, a unique situation because it was an already existing artist studio.
Right.
Yeah, got it. So.
I recognize that.
I don't want to say our hands are tied, is it not?
No, I know.
But we're, we're operating within certain established.
Right.
Boundaries.
Right. I just wanted to mention it just because as we process more and more of these applications, I just want to make sure that when we make the exception to put a larger, to approve, or, you know, in this instance, we're just approving something that already exists, but it is larger than what the regulations would, would generally call for. So I just wanted to weigh that. The other question I had was, and I know these are shipping containers, so perhaps there's already a sealant on the floor. But if this is in the groundwater, you know, it's in these groundwater protection areas. I wonder if the groundwater protection policy, particularly as chemicals of these sorts are going to be used, if we couldn't ask the applicant to make sure that the floor there in the basement is sealed so that if there was a spill, there wouldn't be a problem. And also if you would just be so kind, I, I'm delighted to hear about your process. I, um, I really, you know, basically support, I support your application. But I think, um, in the interest of just, um, having a, a, a record that if you could detail the process of your chemical development as you did to us tonight, if you just include that as part of your application so that we know what the, what, what the chemicals are that are going to be in there and how, how you're going to be disposing of them. I think that would be helpful going forward. That's it. Thank you.
With that, all right, so Kat, so, um, let me just turn back to the question that we were covering. That we have it clear as to what the, uh, the vote is on this. Does the board find a detached artist studio the size proposed is warranted?
Yes.
Any opposed? Hearing none, going once, twice, third time? Okay. So we have, we have both of those qualifications. Do we require any additional information? Anybody on the board?
Well, Kathy just asked for something.
Yeah, just what I asked for and the applicant seemed willing to do that.
But I think we got an affirmative response on that from the applicant.
Yeah, I thought we did. Yes.
Isn't it true though, that the applicant is not doing that work at this time? Yeah. So you're saying that if she were to do that, you're asking for what she would do if she does that?
Right, but it's a proposal. That's what she's saying she wants to do, right? And that's, that's her plan. So.
No, I don't think.
No, I don't think that's where she was going.
All right, maybe I misunderstood.
Or her, or her attorney, speak for her.
Well, Lucilla, why don't you, uh, let's handle this very organically. What, if you want, why don't you clarify for the board what your intentions are?
Yeah, sure. Certainly I was never going to do anything without coming to the board. So I have not done anything, there's no developing happening there. But the, the, what it is right now, and it's functioning perfectly, is a super dark space for the digital exposure of large images.
Right.
So even if I never did any developing there, it's, it's what allows me to see what I'm doing and to show what I'm doing to clients, especially ones that are like in California, without having anybody on my property because I do not want an exhibition space, I want to be left alone. Um, and without spending the money to, to print it. So.
Okay. I, I miss, I guess I misunderstood that you, I thought you were saying you were planning to do your own developing there, that you didn't want to go into New York to have prints made.
It was one of the draws of the space when we bought the property, knowing that that space was down there. And I saw, I thought, wow, this could make an amazing.
Right. No, I get it. I, I, that was my takeaway from this is just if that's what you're proposing to do, it isn't, you know, it's in this, there are three groundwater protection, you know, um, three special, it's, it's a special groundwater area, uh, as Randy mentioned earlier. So that, that's all I just wanted to.
Well, we might.
I don't know what to say, you know, because this is a new process for us. And if you were to, I don't know, once we approve it, if you're required to come back to us to say, well, now I'm going to develop, you know?
Kathy, why don't we in the, in the resolution of approval say, you know, stated that we're not approving, uh, chemical developing through photographic.
That would, that would work for me. I mean, you know, I, I don't want to be punitive if the, if the applicant is willing to, you know, make provision for that. But, um, I just, I just feel like we have to have some process for that piece of this, even though it's not presently happening.
Uh, may I make a suggestion?
Go ahead.
Cause I understand Ms. Cunningham's, um, concern. Uh, and I know based on my experience with the board that you like to craft, tightly, um, conceived documents. If you put, um, a condition of approval in there that the applicant shall not dispose of chemicals by the sink, then I think that would probably.
Okay, that works.
Achieve what everyone is interested in.
Okay.
And certainly, uh, Lucilla being a progressive and environmentally concerned person would be happy to agree to that.
That's great. That was, that was my sense and thank you for that. I think that's great.
Let's add also the, uh, this is about the four, uh, you know, this keeping it sealed so that we don't have any, um, uh, you know, dripping into the ground.
So that would be, that would be something that they haven't done yet, but they would need to do an epoxy coating on the basement.
Yeah, it's, it's currently sealed concrete.
Yeah. I, I thought it might be because those shipping containers are often, often have that capability just because they're shipping containers. So that's why I mentioned it.
You'll concrete walls. Not fancy.
All right. So just to pull that all together. And so the two additional conditions as a result of this evening's dialogue is one that applicant shall not dispose of photographic chemicals in that sink.
Or any toxic chemical.
Sure.
Okay.
And, um, that they shall maintain the flooring sealed.
Maintain was the word I was going to go with.
Yeah, and, and make sure that that flooring in the lower level is properly sealed to prevent chemical leakage.
Great. That's perfect. That, that works. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, um, Eric, you got, you have those, those, I presume, right?
Yes.
Okay, very good. All right, so the, we are in the, uh, the final and most, I guess, well, not the most, but is the application complete and ready to be scheduled for a public hearing? Do we all agree?
Yes.
Yes.
All around? Very good. Okay, you've got that. So.
Thank you.
Time.
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it. Nice to see you all again.
Nice to see you too, John.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have two more matters on, uh, one in the work session and one in the regular meeting. The work session matter we have is urban renewal modification. So Marco is, Marco is flying solo on this one.
All right.
Um, I believe the applicant is, is Rick Whalen.
Mr. Whalen, you're, it appears that the microphone is muted. You want to unmute so that you can join me?
Can we see your lovely face?
Yeah, I don't know what's there.
Yeah, he is.
I just went for a bottle of Coke. As the host has asked me, can I, you know, this thing here?
Okay. So I've shared screened. You guys should have the, uh, the old urban renewal map on. So this is a application to request the modification of the urban renewal map so that urban renewal parcel 11, which consists, which, um, sorry, urban renewal parcel 11, which is here, uh, modify it so it will consist of lots 36 through 40, rather than the recommended, uh, lots 36 to 41, which is as it currently is in these dark old lines. Additionally, uh, the planning department recommends the map would be further modified with regards to urban renewal parcel 14, which is next door, uh, which we'll discuss, uh, later on the memo. So, um, as mentioned before, the urban renewal plan is currently designed where lots 36 through 41 would form one, uh, parcel, which is urban renewal parcel 11. And the Easterly lots 42 through 50 would form another, which is number 14, 42 through 50. So at the moment, uh, neither property can be built of as of right. Mr. and Mrs. Palmese are the landowners of the lands that would result in the modification, uh, which is, so they owned, uh, lots 36 through 40, uh, to form their parcel in accordance to the urban renewal map. They need to purchase lot 41, which is this lot here, from the owner, from the, from that, from that owner. So they need to purchase 41 from the owner of 41, uh, which is identified as Ms. Cortez. Ms. Cortez owns the Easterly lots 42 through 45, uh, which is only a portion of the urban renewal parcel 14. So if she were to follow the urban renewal map, she would, uh, come to an agreement to sell lot 41, uh, to the Palmese's so that they can form their lot over here. And she is to purchase 46 through 50 so she can form her lot, which is number 14. But in 2005, uh, the town board at the time purchased lots 46 through 48, uh, using open space funding. So the parcels are clearly, um, a portion of, uh, urban renewal parcel number 14. So as a result, um, Ms. Cortez cannot assemble that parcel number 14. And effectively split in half due to the town's purchase. Any, any land that is acquired by the town using open space funding, uh, cannot be used for any other purpose. So it's effectively, um, it's, it's, it's effectively, uh, cannot be moved, uh, in, in its ownership. The remaining lot 49 through 50 is owned by another party. So all the lots that are involved in modification are uncleared. I'll briefly show the base map. And so they're all un-uncleared and there's only B residence, which has a minimum lot area of 20,000. The urban renewal map had recommended the western parcel, which was number 11. Let me back up here again. So as it, as it was designed, urban renewal parcel, uh, number 11 was to be about 12,000 square feet. And number 14 was to be about 20,000 square feet. So, you know, 42 through 50 was about 20,000, 36 through 41 would be about 12,000. However, uh, because 46 and through 48 were effectively taken out, of the, of the, of the, of the square footage, uh, that's eliminated 6,000 square feet of land. And it's effectively alienated 4,000 square feet here. That was to be part of number 14. So, um, without the proposed modification, uh, the parcel to the west, which is number 11, they could purchase 41 still and they will be the 12,000 square feet. However, number 14, um, would, would only have about 8,000 square feet left, I believe, which is 42, 42 through 45. They'll only have 8,000 square feet. And that would result in a lot, result in two lots that are uneven in lot size and in lot shape. With the proposed modification, that the result would be two roughly 10,000 square foot parcels, with, and would be similar in lot size and lot shape. Well, with the proposed modification and, um, and, and in action from the town, uh, from the town board, if they, if they modify another part. So it's also noted that there's other parcels in this urban renewal map SP3 that are also roughly 10,000 square feet in size, uh, in the area. So it wouldn't be considered uncommon, uh, of lot size and shape in the area. So the modification just by itself, um, because it's only, because applicant represents the Palmese's, only 36 and through 40 effectively are being represented here. Uh, if the modification were to be approved, it would result in this map here. You can't, it's really small difference in that it's hard, it's hard to see. But effectively speaking, this became a bolded line. So that if we're looking at these bold lines here, this would be one parcel, uh, 36 through 40. So if this modification were to be approved with its representation, lot 41 would be considered as a billable parcel. And the issues regarding the urban renewal parcel 14 would still remain. That's why the planning department is recommending that the remaining lots also be amended by the town board in response to the subject application. And the results of that, um, basically it's recommend, we recommend a new line be drawn between 45 and 46. So I'm going to show you that here. So this is what currently is the map designed to do. And if we were to go to what, what the town, uh, the town of East Hampton would amend to do, it would look something like, it would look like this. There is a copy of that attached to your memo. Unfortunately, that one is a little bit incorrect in that, uh, it's missing this access here, this little access dot. Uh, that's, just want to put that and clarify that.
Could you, could you point that out, Marco? I'm, 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 I'm not seeing it on the screen.
Highlighted here, uh, this little, on your map, this, this bullet point is missing. First, uh, that was just my mistake. But what you see here is what the town board, uh, would amend the map to. So, uh, as I mentioned, there would be a new line drawn between 45 through 46, uh, and the elimination of the existing line between 41 and through 42, that would be eliminated. This would create a new billable parcel for lots 41 through 45. And this would be renewed urban renewal map parcel, uh, urban renewal parcel number 14A. Uh, and the remaining lots of 46 through 50, uh, that should be renamed to 14B. That's typical standard kind of way these are, um, these have been named before. There's other parcels that use, utilize A and B. And so that would be 14B and the access, of course, would be created here, um, as depicted there. So, uh, effectively speaking, the modifications to the urban renewal map is a reasonable, reasonable alteration to ensure that the subject lots will be better designed and reflected as such on the map. The planning department recommends the planning board review the applicant's narrative and recommends approval for the requests for modification. I do want to make mention that the town's consultant engineer has also prepared a memo, with recommendations as well, uh, which are pretty much in following, uh, with what I've said. So.
Right. Marco, that was a very thorough applicant, uh, review of this, um, uh, urban renewal modification. Thank you for the completeness of the report. Thank you also for pointing out the engineer's, um, review of the matter. We, I, I should say that, you know, just so that people understand that, uh, we, we will give comments that are basically limited to the question of whether we think it's a reasonable, um, uh, request. We don't take public comment on these things. We, uh, there, I think there was a letter submitted to the file on this from the public, uh, which is something that, uh, Israel wrote, uh, to the, uh, public. And I think that we had a chance to read that. But while we're in the, uh, the Zoom meetings, um, we, we don't take public comment as we had been, uh, when we were in town hall. And it's been pretty consistent in our policy for the last, well, now it's over a year that we've been doing this. So, uh, yeah, because, you know, this is, this is a process, uh, what, what the board does with the hearing from, uh, the applicant and then hearing from, well, hearing from the planning department and then hearing from the applicant and working on the application and having a town, a member of the planning board report to the board and then discussion with the board. And it's, um, a decision that was made a year ago. And I, I think we're consistent on this. So I do know that there's been a public comment. I know there was a letter and I believe that we've all had a chance to read that. So, uh, does anyone have any comment on the board, um, with respect to this application?
Sam, I, I just quickly, uh, I agree. Marco did a great job and I, and I think it is a reasonable revision. The one loose end seems to be that I don't know exactly why the town bought forty-six through forty-eight with CPF money. Maybe part of the density reduction program in Springs. But really, the town should reach out to the owner of forty-nine to fifty to see if they want to sell it for open space too. Otherwise, they're just hanging out there.
I think that's the proposal, Randy.
Oh.
That's what the, that's what the engineer's report suggests. The remaining lots specifically would be slated for future acquisition by the town of East Hampton as open space. Lots forty-nine and fifty, and I don't know that it was bought with CPF fund or just purchased outright. I don't think it was, right, Sam?
That's what I'm understanding.
Yeah.
You mean forty-six, forty-six?
I think you have the number wrong on that, Kathy.
What's that? Six through forty-eight, which is the, the town owned parcel right now, was not purchased with CPF funds because I believe that it predated that fund. It was purchased with like the equivalent, it was like an open space grant, I believe.
Right.
No, actually, the applicant's representative might know because he is a
Oh, okay. So in, in either case, it's, it's restricted to open space. And the owner of forty-nine and fifty is not going to be able to assemble a buildable lot.
Right.
But you eventually, okay, that's all.
Joanne, Joanne, go ahead, and if Rick has something.
I, I believe that the town attorney has, office has discussed this with the town board and that they are going to pursue purchasing that lot, that, that end piece.
Okay. So is that the reason why, and this is more of a legal question? Because as I understand it, when you increase density, which you could say that we're doing here by taking two U R Ps and turning it into three, that you're increasing density, that you need a planning board sub waiver review. Is that, is it because those other lots that are not, are going to become non-buildable? The reason why you wouldn't need a sub waiver here?
I, I don't know if that's the precisely correct terminology, but I understand the question. Jameson?
And I, good.
Rick, if you want.
Well, actually, could you, that easiest for me to discuss this is with the original existing conditions map. If Marco could put that back up. There you go. Okay, thank you. First of all, thanks, thank you to Marco. Just zoom out there. Oh, that's okay. So there we go. So very quickly, what happened here is urban renewal parcel, you can see the two urban renewal parcels we're talking about, number eleven and number fourteen. And there's a kind of a solid line between them, between lots forty-one and forty-two on the filed subdivision map. So what happened in two thousand and six is the town board, as I understand it, I was not involved. But in two thousand and six, there was a company called Structural Technologies, which owned a number of urban renewal parcels or parts of parcels scattered around the town. And they came to the town and said, hey, we have these urban renewal parcels. We'll give you a good price on them. You want to buy them all? And so the town board said, yeah. What the town board did wrong, in my opinion, is that they bought them using open space monies. I'm not sure whether they use CPF or they might have used the small lot acquisition fund that existed at the time. But whatever it is, they did not use general municipal funds. They used public open space money. So the town bought lots forty-six through forty-eight in the middle of urban renewal parcel fourteen. And what they did, although the urban renewal map was not amended at that time, they did a de facto subdivision. Because as you've just discussed, lots forty-nine through fifty on the east side there and on Virus Street, as well as lots forty-two to forty-five, which were supposed to be combined in as U R P fourteen, can no longer be combined because the town owns property between them, which the town can no longer alienate or ever allowed to be developed. So the town did a de facto subdivision. The town board should never have done that. If the town buys land within an urban renewal map, they should do, do it one of two ways. You either buy a parcel, you buy property for the purpose of combining it with the other private lands in accordance with your urban renewal map. Or if you want to buy open space, you buy the entire urban renewal parcel. So what the town board did in two thousand and six, and some of you have caught on to this, is they left the owners of forty-nine, fifty and forty-two, forty-five, who are not my clients, by the way. They left them hanging. They didn't change the urban renewal map. They didn't notify these people, hey, when you're ready to build, you're not going to be able to follow our urban renewal plan because we blocked you by buying the, the mid, the middle parcel with open space funds. What's going to have to happen now, and this is exactly what the planning department and the town engineer have said, is this, the town board is going to have to buy lots forty-nine, fifty. They're not going to want somebody to build in a four thousand square foot lot. So the town is going to go to the owner forty-nine, fifty, and they're going to work out a deal and buy it. At that point, the town board will own lots forty-six through fifty, and that will be open space. That leaves lots thirty-six to forty-five. My client owns thirty-six to forty, and a woman named Karen Cortez owns forty-one to forty-five. Both my client and the neighbor Cortez, and that again, I don't represent her, own ten thousand square feet of land, right? Right now, the urban renewal parcel, the urban renewal map requires that my client buy two thousand square feet from Cortez. The end result, since we know that the land to the east is going to be owned and preserved by the town, is that my guy has to buy two thousand square feet from the neighbor so that he has a twelve thousand square foot lot and she has an eight thousand square foot lot. And that doesn't make any sense at all. They each own ten thousand square feet. At the end of the day, there are going to be two houses on that twenty thousand square feet. And for that matter, two, two houses on the original acreage, because the town will preserve everything to the right. And all I'm asking basically is prevent me from having, my client from having to go and buy two thousand square feet from the neighbor just to make her lot eight thousand square feet and our lot twelve thousand. Leave them as they is, you know, as they are, will both have ten thousand square feet. And the town board will have to buy lots forty-nine to fifty. And then it will preserve, have preserve forty-six through fifty. That is what the engineer is recommending, that's what the planning department has recommended. And that's why I ask you to support and to move on to the town board.
Well. Let me, let me hear from Jane, well, let us hear, I should say, from Jameson. And then we can speak among the board. So Jameson?
Yeah, I just will say that I believe what Rick is a characterization is accurate from what I know. And I'm, you know, just pinch hitting for Thomas tonight. That when forty-six through forty-eight was purchased by the town, like I said earlier, it was not with CPF funds. I think it was with the, but it is open space. I do believe that the town board is discussing, and I think that that will be part and parcel to the planning board's recommendation to the town board regarding this application. I think that they're discussing acquiring forty-nine through fifty. So really, what's in front of the planning board tonight would just be, you know, your recommendations on whether that line, you know, where, how forty-one, which, which side of forty-one, that solid line should be.
It's, it's limited to that.
Yes.
Yes. Is there any way?
Let's go around the table now. Thank you, Jameson. So.
Is there anything that we could do, or the town board could do to, instead of creating these two substandard lots like Rick is suggesting? To make, to create one twenty thousand square foot lot, which would be thirty-six through forty-five? Now, I know that would require one of the two owner, Rick's client buying the entire Cortez property. But I'm just wondering, you know, I'm just trying to avoid a situation where you're creating, what we're doing is we're creating these substandard lots.
Can I, can I address that?
Yeah, sure.
All right. Number one, first of all, I want to remind you that the end of the day, right now, the urban renewal plan is, it stands, recommends on the property that we're talking about, thirty-six through fifty, it recommends two houses. At the end of the day, that same area, provided that the town board does what we expect them to do, we'll still, still have two houses. So there's no effective change in the overall density. I want to make that point first. The second involves a little bit delving into history here. The urban renewal maps, the urban renewal plan that you're familiar with today was created in nineteen seventy-six and nineteen seventy-seven. I have to say it was the product of the, of the, the brain, was the brainchild of a guy like him, so to be my mentor, who was Russell Stein. Russell Stein was a counsel to the group for American Southork in the nineteen seventies. He was later town trustee attorney, town planning board attorney for a while, and then the town attorney in the mid nineteen eighties, when Randy was on the town board, and Russell created the modern zoning code. He was, and still is, in my opinion, a brilliant guy. And it was Russell's idea to use the New York State Urban Renewal Law to deal with an issue which by the nineteen seventies, the town understood was a ticking time bomb, which was the old file maps. And what the, what they did in nineteen seventy-six, seventy-seven, with, by dint of a lot of effort by the planning board and a consulting engineering firm called Greenman Peterson, and I should say the town planner at the time, Tom Thorson, is they did a complete urban renewal study of sixty-six old file maps. One by one, the planning board reviewed them, passed them on to the town board, which adopted each of those maps by public hearing. And they did essentially two things. Number one, they combined lots where possible to reduce density in the old file maps. The actual reduction of density was, was substantial, but not, maybe not as dramatic as you might think. They actually calculated at the time that the reduction density overall was about ten percent of those maps. The other thing that they did is they came with a rationalized procedure by which the roadwork would be done and roads would gradually be built out. That's what they accomplished in that period of time. That was done in a systematic, you know, comprehensive fashion. My opinion is the town and the town planning board and the town board can't go and just kind of suissesponte, say, hey, by the way, you know, there's two lots over there next to one another. Wouldn't it be cool to combine those? My client, the neighbor Karen Cortez, all these people now have bought their properties in reliance on the urban renewal maps that have existed since nineteen seventy-seven. To the best of my knowledge, the town has never combined parcels in the urban renewal maps since that time, except in a few rare instances where the property owners themselves have come in and said, you know, we want to replat a map and we're going to reduce density. I know that happened, for example, the south end of Handy Lane, you know, which several lots were owned by a spec builder. He wanted some of the larger lots anyway, and they did kind of a replating of that, and they, they did reduce lots. But if the town wants to go in and relook at the remaining urban renewal parcels and considering combining lots at this time, it's my opinion, you have to do it the same way it was done in seventy-six, seventy-seven, which is a comprehensive look at all of the urban renewal parcels. You can't just go in because somebody wrote a letter to the board and say, gee, we should really combine thirty-six through forty-five and just do that. That, that's a, that's arbitrary capricious. You have to look at everything. And frankly, at this point in time in the urban renewal process, I don't think that's warranted. So that would be my first comment. My second comment is, the reason we're even having this conversation. Look, my client could go and buy lot forty-one right now, and he's got to, you know, he has to negotiate with the neighbor, but he would have a legal urban renewal parcel. The problem is that the neighbor right now, she doesn't know what she's stuck with because she doesn't know what she can do with the remaining properties. And that came about because the town board effectively sabotaged his own plan by buying the middle part of the urban renewal parcel with funding that it cannot, does not allow it to resell that lot. That's not how the urban renewal plan was supposed to be. If the town board was going to buy part of an urban renewal lot, it was to convey it to the other people in accordance with the urban renewal plan. So we shouldn't be penalized because the town board in two thousand and six decided to spend open space money to screw up urban renewal parcel fourteen. So I, I, the answer is, I do not think you can do, you know, what was just suggested and what David Buddha suggested in his letter, unless you want to take a comprehensive look at all of the urban renewal plans. So, you know, we relied upon this right now. My client right now, if he was able to buy lot forty-one, which I don't think the neighbor would sell until this is resolved, he'd have an urban renewal lot, he'd have a building permit. We're not interested in combining with all of her, that basically devalues our lot by about fifty percent.
I feel like I should get a C L E credit for that, Rick.
Well, I did give a C L E course, by the way, Sam, back in April on the urban renewal maps.
I'm going to say that's like part two, Rick. Thanks for that.
Jameson's going to get a C L E also. The thing is, we, and, and this relates to the letter that you mentioned. You know, I, I think your point about this being, you know, a singular application, if you will. I know that's exactly the right word, but it can't be done in isolation.
So. That's exactly, that's what I'm saying.
And I think that's a valid point. I really do. All right. Does anyone else have any comment, Lee? And I thought I saw you had, you were, you were on the verge of saying something a few moments ago. Or am I wrong on that? Ian? Anyone? Hello?
Yep.
This is, I'm talking to the entire board. Does anyone else have anything? I thought I saw Ian wanted to say.
I think Ian's no longer here.
Ian, oh, maybe he was saying he's leaving. Well, we still have, we still have a quantum, right?
Yeah.
Rick, you chased everybody away, you know.
You should never put me on last.
Excuse me, Chair, this is Mike at LTV. Excuse me, yeah, I don't see Ian, just like you said, and the second he comes back, I'll let him back in.
If he does, well, we're going to be, we're, we're.
Close to the end, right?
Right now, yeah, we got one more item. After speaking of which, we have an urban renewal, I'm sorry, board of review. On, on the U. All right, so is there anyone on the board that I believe that this is a reasonable request for a modification of the urban renewal map? Anybody? Hearing none.
I, I think it's reasonable.
Reasonable.
I think it's a reasonable request, yes.
I, I'm doing, I'm anticipating. So does everyone think it's a reasonable request?
Yes.
Yeah. Yes, yes. Does anyone not think it's a reasonable request? Hearing none. That's the answer. It is a, we, it is, we can report to the town board, but we believe this is a reasonable request.
Okay, great.
Okay, thank, thank you very much.
Thanks, Rick.
Thanks, Rick.
All right. And with that, we are done with the works, with the, with the work session, and we will move into the regular meeting. We already had the scheduling of the public hearing on eighty Firestone Bluff. So the only matter that's left, the, the artist studio will bring in next week, Mr. Sebastian's artist studio will be on the agenda the next time, I presume. You all correct?
Yeah.
The last matter we have is an order of review on Miguel Narvares, Narve, damn it. Bad with names tonight, I apologize to them. Miguel Narvez and Tania Rayo Narvez. And the, this is for a building permit on the premises located at six eleven Stephen Hans Path. Map number two eighty-four, block number twenty, lots one through six and lot number seven, urban renewal parcel. Number ninety-eight, Suffolk County Tax Map, three hundred dash one thirty-six dash six dash six and number seven point two. The, I have read the board of review. The amount of the undertaking is eleven thousand, one hundred dollars, and I move it's approval.
Who's Ian?
Well, there you go.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, very good. Ian, we, I, I.
I apologize, I got, I got dropped. I think it was an internet issue on my end.
Okay, I, I hope that we didn't, that you didn't have a question or an issue that we weren't able to cover in the last matter.
I was hoping for another hour about it, but I'm good.
Such luck.
We just announced the vote on that last, that last urban renewal map. That, that, I'm sorry, the last board of review was passed seven, nothing. And now it is eight thirty-eight. And Ian, since you're back now, is anybody else has anything they want to add? If not, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, there you go. That gives me your chair. All those in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Jameson. Nice to see you.
Thanks, Jameson.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, planning staff.
Okay.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Sam.
See you.